No regrets.
For you.
If you have the village, would you like to present to me with this plaque?
And a check.
Thank you. That's awesome.
What's, what, what, the plaque or the check?
How much a check.
Let her open it up.
Come on up for a picture.
Oh, yeah.
And I will acknowledge Amy's dad is retired chief from Western Springs, retired chief from Downers Grove, and a mentor to all of the police chiefs.
Yeah.
Congratulations. And I think if I'm Mike now, I could keep Tom at the podium to give recognition to our crossing guards.
Thank you, Mayor. Every year, it's almost like the post office model through rain, snow, sleet, and through the dark of night, but I think it's through in the dark of the morning, we see our crossing guards out there handling our crossing duties to help keep our children, our students, and our smaller residents safe. They do it out there, and I'm amazed. You go by and it's pouring rain, or it's, you know, 25 degrees below zero with snow coming down, and they're out there doing their duty while I'm inside a nice warm car driving by. And from the bottom of my heart, every time I see that, I, I, I think of them and I thank them. And so every time of this year, we try to recognize and acknowledge their efforts and thank them for their efforts to keeping our residents safe. So I have a certificate here, and I will call them up. Not all could make it, most can, but not all. So if I could have Jan Lucater come up and just stand next to me here, and we'll get, we'll get everybody in a group, and then you get your certificate. And then James McRory. Crossing guard supervisor, Al Roddy. And I will say about Al, Al is the supervisor that goes out and makes sure that our crossing guards are there and our children are safe as well, too. So we, an extra special thanks for Al. Lynn Gustafson.
Agnes.
Agnes?
Agnes.
Agnes. I was, I was close.
Yep.
Marguerite Reagan. Okay, we, we thank her. She couldn't make the, I think the rest probably couldn't make it, but I do want to acknowledge them. Doug Fisher. Keith Sellers. Most of us know Keith from Holy Trinity and other activities and parades and everything. Victoria Biddle. And then, so everyone knows, and it's later on the agenda, we contract with Andy Frame Services to provide the crossing guard services in the village. The crossing guards behind me do, sort of, the residents of Westmont, but they are actually employees of Andy Frame. And their coordinator is Ed Millard, who may or may not be coming here later tonight. So I would like to present each of them with a certificate that says, "A certificate of public service is awarded to the crossing guard by their name. In recognition of your dedicated service to our schoolchildren, thank you for keeping our community safe dated this 11th day of June 2015. Signed by Ronald Gunther, our mayor, and Tom Allhorn, police chief." So we all applaud that.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim, thank you for your service. Thank you. I just...
So you gotta hold your certificate. I'll go on this side, and I'll be on one side, I'll be on the other. And then we all gonna get close like we all like each other.
Again, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to call Larry McIntyre to the podium to talk about an event that's coming to Westmont.
Thank you, Mayor and Village Board. As you are all aware, our growing relationship with TECO, Taiwanese Cultural Center here in town, we've been doing a lot of activities with them. And it was just only a month, little over a month ago, that we had a great dance performance of it at the high school, and we're already planning our next big event. There's gonna be a sports troupe coming to town in July, and I'd like to introduce Angela from TECO to give us all the details.
Hi, Mayor and Village Board, and ladies and gentlemen. I will be presenting the TECO and also the Taiwanese-American Chamber of Commerce in Chicago. My name's Angela Yang, and along with me, I have a cultural center director, Roy Yang. And also, we have a president of our Taiwanese-American Chamber of Commerce, and also our board director, Mr. Lynn, there with me today. And thank you for giving me a chance to, to report this events coming up in, on July the 20th. Let me just briefly talk about this event. This event is actually hosted, hosted by the Taiwanese-American Chamber of Commerce and also partnered with the city of Westmont. And this is the, I will say, not the second time, but several times, we hook up together to have the events like this. And we're seeking the, the cultural exchange and also looking for the long-term, the good relationship with you guys. And this group actually is centered by the Taiwanese government, the city of Taipei, this group called Taipei Youth Folk Sports Group. They are composed by the 26th, the brilliant kids, age range from 11 to 14. They are here to perform basically a traditional Taiwanese folk sport. And the event here, we're looking forward to show that American society is mainly focused on the kids. So this year, this time, we're really honored to have the party district to work with us. And we just had a little meeting early in this afternoon, and the party district provide the facility, the gym, and also provide the kids, since there are, I know in the summertime it's very hard to have the kids around. So they have a summer program there, and they're looking forward to cooperate with us. So we will have the troupe over there to have a workshop in the morning. Let me show you the flyer. Should I just, here? Maybe you guys can see it. It's right there. We will have a workshop in the morning. And also, and after a little break, we will have the formal performance at 1:30, is still in the same place, in the party district. So we're looking for a party district students to participate, and also, actually, Mayor Ron Gunther is going to see if they can have a more party districts near, a neighborhood party district to, to participate to. So I'm just looking for a friendship and also the culture exchanging, and looking forward to this event to happen in Westmont again. And thank you for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. There'll be more information. This is a unique opportunity to have a traveling group from Taiwan or to come into Westmont. And it's gonna be at our community center gym. It's gonna be geared towards our date camps, but it's open to the public. So, again, thank you for coordinating. Now I'd like to call Chief Weiss to the podium. He has a number of awards to present.
Thanks, Mayor. As long as I have the podium, there's a couple of things that I want to do first. I want to remind everybody that our kids' safety camp, starting next Tuesday and Wednesday, that camp is full. Our July 16th and 17th, and August 6th and 7th camps, we're still taking applications, and we have plenty of openings for both those camps. So contact the fire department at (630) 981-6400, if you're interested in do that, or stop by our headquarters station. One, one other quick thing before we get into our awards and stuff tonight. The Westmont Fire Department had a tragedy in our family this last Saturday night, and one of our firefighters lost his 16-year-old son. And today was service, and last night was the visitation. I just asked that if everybody can keep Mark and Callie Swansky in their thoughts and prayers. Their son had a, a heart condition, and he was taken too soon, too young, but our family is supporting them, and we're continuing. So I just wanted to pass that on to everybody. And now with that, I'd like to invite up our EMS director, Lynn Drelli.
Thank you, everybody. I do have a guest here who is actually bringing an award to us. It's Mr. Art Miller. And Mr. Miller actually is giving us the American Heart Association Mission Lifetime EMS recognition. And what that is, it's the bronze, and it's for our STEMI program. That means our cardiac alerts, that when we take our patients to the hospital and we call a cardiac alert on them, that we're meeting a percentage-wise. And so if Mr. Miller could come up?
Be happy to. So my, my title is Mission Lifeline Director, and in the Heart Association, Mission Lifeline is all about systems of care for time-sensitive diagnosis. So this includes STEMI heart attacks, which is the most serious of all, about 200,000 deaths per year in the United States right now, and then also strokes and cardiac arrests. This department, along with 18 others in the state of Illinois, so only 19 across the state, are being awarded this year for their great work for STEMI patients. And it's through the generosity and the, the vision of this board and the chief officers to appropriate for the equipment and the training that these personnel need in order to be able to serve this. So it's my pleasure to present to the city of Westmont the Mission Lifeline Bronze Award for EMS recognition for 2015.
Congratulations.
I'd like to say just one real quick thing. It's really, this award really goes to all my medics, because if it wasn't for them and their outstanding training and their dedication, we would never have this award. So I do want to thank all my paramedics.
Real quick, we're here tonight because, and we have all these firemen and paramedics in here on the night because of a incident that we had on Wednesday, April 29th, this year at 1:00 PM. We were dispatched and activated fire alarm at 5605 King Arthur Court. Upon arrival, it was verified that there was smoke coming from an apartment building, and a call was immediately upgraded to a working structure fire. Additional assistance from neighboring communities responding, first-arrival companies immediately deployed hose lines to extinguish the fire. Those Westmont police officers were on the scene prior to the fire prior to being relayed important information to the first-in companies that there was attendant inside the building. With a coordinated fire attack and proper ventilations, companies completed a search of the building and located an unconscious male approximately 12 feet inside the front door. Crews immediately brought the citizen outside, initiated advanced life support care. Patient was taken to Good Samaritan Hospital in serious condition. One of the things that I wanted to pass on about this, this is, first of all, because I always like to have the opportunity to talk about fire alarm systems, this is a great example of an early detection fire alarm system that allowed us to respond quickly and save a life. We wanted to commend our entire emergency response team. Several of those people are here tonight in this room for their fast and professional What I want to do first, as with all calls, it's the 911 call that's received. And tonight, we have the dispatcher in the room that we want to, I want to present to Mayor a chief's award on our behalf. And we also have Deputy Chief Bluder from Downers Police, Supervisor Jenny Rizzo, and Deputy Chief Bandowski from the Fire Department. We're all a cooperative team between Westmont Police and Fire and Downers Police and Fire. So with, with that, I'd like to have telecommuner Tammy come up. I'm gonna give a chief's recognition award. This is awarded to Tammy, recognition of her superior dispatching efforts exhibited during the King Arthur apartment fire on April 29th, and is awarded this day 2015 by the mayor and myself. And I just want to say, before we go up, take pictures and that, and we present this to you, that she was as calm on the radio as I'm always said that I'm calm, and I was the instant commander, so we did a lot of talking back and forth, but the information that she took and relayed to the first companies and through the police and the fire, she's part of saving this person's life, and so that's why you're here tonight, and we want to recognize you.
Thank you.
Mayor, what I want to do now is invite Captain, Captain Kevin Severt up. He's from our awards committee, and he's gonna take over with the rest of the awards that we're gonna give, and I'm gonna come up there and help you.
Good, thank you.
Evening, Mayor Gunther, members of the Westmont Village Board. I'm Kevin Severt, captain of the Westmont Fire Department and current standing member of our awards committee. I'm honored to stand beside Chief Weiss and recognize these outstanding members of our organization tonight. This has long been the role of Captain Kilkinsky as our committee chairman, but due to family obligations, he's unable to join us tonight. To the award recipients, he extends his apologies and congratulations. Our first award this evening is the teamwork commendation. This is awarded to each member who functioned together as a team, performing above and beyond the operational expectancy of that group to achieve a certain goal in an emergency situation. In the case of call 151264 at 5605 King Arthur Court, these members worked together as a team both safely and efficiently to perform actions not always typical on our fire ground. If present with the following members, please step forward. The crew of 1831, Lieutenant Josh Turin, Fire Medic Kathy Meyer, Fire Medic Rob Dubell. The crew of 1839, Captain Scott Salala, Fire Medic Robert Radcliffe, Fire Medic Greg Sopko. The crew of 1834, Fire Medic Eric Rasmussen, and Duty Chief James Fitzgerald. This award states that it's a teamwork commendation award in recognition of outstanding teamwork exhibited while rescuing and treating an apartment fire patient April 29th, 2015. Due to the actions by members of the Westmont Fire Department, this man is alive today.
Congratulations, guys.
Next award to be given tonight is our life-saving award. This recognition is awarded to a member for the long-term saving of an individual's life when no abnormal risk to his or her safety exists. These members were an intricate part of removing the fire victim from his apartment. These members were faced with performing this task under unfavorable living conditions, coupled with limited visibility and dangerous products of combustion, like carbon monoxide, hydrogen sulfide, hydrogen cyanide. Members receiving this award tonight are Captain Scott Salala, Lieutenant Josh Turin, firefighter paramedic Greg Sopko, and firefighter paramedic Robert Dubell. Just to quickly read this one. This is, again, the life-saving award in recognition of outstanding actions taken towards saving a human life on April 29th, 2015, awarded this day, the 11th of June, 2015. And then the, the last award this evening is one that, that actually is rarely given out. It's the award of valor. It's one awarded to a member who greatly exceeds the normal risks to his or own safety, demonstrating bravery above and beyond the call of duty in an emergency situation to save or attempt to save a life of another individual. Lieutenant Josh Turin, with information received by the Westmont Police Department of a confirmed victim knowingly put himself ahead of the hose line without a confirmed water supply to search and rescue that individual. He exposed himself to rapidly growing fire conditions, intense heat, all the while knowing what dangers he faced. In the fire service, we have a saying, "Risk a lot to save a lot." Lieutenant Turin's actions on April 29th, 2015 exemplified that tradition. He joins a very elite few members of the Westmont Fire Department to be nominated for and receive the award of valor. Lieutenant Josh Turin. This award reads, Valor Award. This certificate is awarded to Lieutenant Josh Turin in recognition of outstanding fire rescue services provided in saving of a human life at King Arthur Apartments on April 29th, 2015, awarded this 11th day of June, 2015. And then the, the last award this evening is one that, that actually is rarely given out. It's the award of valor. It's one awarded to a member who greatly exceeds the normal risks to his or own safety, demonstrating bravery above and beyond the call of duty in an emergency situation to save or attempt to save a life of another individual. Lieutenant Josh Turin, with information received by the Westmont Police Department of a confirmed victim knowingly put himself ahead of the hose line without a confirmed water supply to search and rescue that individual. He exposed himself to rapidly growing fire conditions, intense heat, all the while knowing what dangers he faced. In the fire service, we have a saying, "Risk a lot to save a lot." Lieutenant Turin's actions on April 29th, 2015 exemplified that tradition. He joins a very elite few members of the Westmont Fire Department to be nominated for and receive the award of valor. Lieutenant Josh Turin. This certificate is awarded to Lieutenant Josh Turin in recognition of outstanding fire rescue services provided in saving of a human life at King Arthur Apartments on April 29th, 2015, awarded this 11th day of June, 2015.
Yeah, the family, too. Okay. And the little one. All right, let's get the family here. Ah. You gotta hold the baby. How old is it? Good size. Wow.
Mayor, before I leave the podium, I just, you've probably noticed, especially the board and stuff, in the last year, we've been here a lot. And we've been here a lot because of the people in this room and the rest of the people that are on this department, the character and the personnel, and the people in this room give 150% to the residents in this village every day, and that's why they're in front of you getting these awards. We've never had this many before. We've never recognized the individuals like we have before, but these truly are earned. And when you have a gentleman like this that put his life on the line, he, and I wanted to tell you, he won't tell you about his, from the heat in that room going in and getting the gentleman, it turned his, his fire coat a different color, and he did end up with a slight burn on his ear, even though he had his protective clothing on. So he did put his life on the line, and I wanted to let you know that we've submitted his name to the 100 Club to be considered this year, and we're waiting here on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Again, another round of applause. All right, we'll move on to additional reports. Again, that's a lot of, this is kind of the enjoyable part of the meeting when you have our staff to go over and above the call of duty. So I'll turn to Clerk Simski and ask her if she has something tonight.
Well, first of all, congratulations to all these wonderful employees we have throughout our village, but the Fire Department is a prime example, so is our police, our streets, public works. I, I can't go on enough about our village employees. I think we have exceptional, we're blessed, and maybe we always keep them. So secondly, I just wanted to announce that our next Public Information Committee meeting will be August 20th. And if you're watching this tonight, please shut off your TVs and go to the street fair. It's much more fun down there. There's music, there's all kinds of things going on. You can watch this board meeting all week, any day. So just turn it on and watch it after it's over. Get out and enjoy the street fair. There's no rain, it's a beautiful night. And thirdly, Happy Father's Day to all our dads on June 21st, because we won't have a meeting before that. All of you have a wonderful day.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Semeney.
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Manager May?
Thank you. Two things. First, I wanted to make everyone aware that, you know, speaking of staff, next Wednesday, the Village Hall will be closed, closed to the public, but where it is for a staff-wide in-service training for the entire day. And similarly, our Independence Day, the village offices will be closed on Friday, July 3rd, in recognition of Independence Day. Lastly, I don't remember if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, but when we approved, at some point, maybe it was when we approved the, the stormwater tax ordinance, that there was a, a statement about making sure that, you know, we make sure all the businesses know. And we looked into how to directly notify them and to do, firstly, it's a sales tax, so it will be administered, and notification is to be done by the state of Illinois, and they, that was part of the, the asset of having that, that form as opposed to a utility fee. But for us to do a direct mailing to all the businesses in town was approximately $1,300 to, to do that. So we partnered with the chambers, you know, offered to at least the chamber members, you know, we'll blast that out as an additional reminder, but I just wanted to let you know the, the extent of what our note, direct notification was going to be, because I don't intend to do the direct mailing. And that was all I had. Thank you.
Trustees, Trustee Barry.
Our next Public Works Committee is July 9th. That'll be before the board meeting, and that'll be right in here. I think we're having most of the meetings now. And Environmental Improvement Commission, they are having the electronics recycling June 20th, from 8:00 AM to noon at the Downers Grove Township Highway Department. We often just say that's down the street from Bale's Ace Hardware, so if you just keep going down past that, you would find the electronics recycling, June 20th, 8:00 AM to noon, and you literally just pull through the garage, unload the car, and you could be on your way. And the next meeting for EIC is to be determined, but it will be in August. And again, just congratulations, Chief Weiss and your staff. It's great, 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 absolutely. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next Administration Committee meeting will be July 23rd. Also, last week, our street fair kicked off with an amazing evening. We had over 200 cars, we had over 2,000 people downtown. It was packed all the way from Burlington up to Napper Boulevard. And so I want to say thank you to all the volunteers that made this happen. We can't do it without them, obviously, but it was a super night. The weather couldn't have been better, couldn't have been better. Also, so you know, the Taste of Westmont is less than a month away, and we need volunteers, so if anybody would like to volunteer for the Taste of Westmont, there are opportunities abounding. We have from selling tickets for the carnival rides to working the beer tent, to the information booth, and so on. If you would call the Special Events Office at (630) 829-9378, and obviously come out and enjoy the event as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Addington.
A couple of things, thank you. First one is, this is for the wives. On June 25th, the Westmont Lions Club is gonna be bringing into town the hearing bus. And so all those wives who want to say that their husband has selective hearing or not, come out, it's gonna be in the parking lot at Maze Lake from 2:00 to 4:00 on the 20th If you would call the Special Events Office at 630-829-9378, and obviously come out and enjoy the event as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Addington?
A couple of things, thank you. First one is, this is for the wives. On June 25th, the Westmont Lions Club is going to be bringing into town the hearing bus. And so all those wives who want to say that their husband has selective hearing or not, come out, it's going to be in the parking lot at Maze Lake from 2:00 to 4:00 on the 25th of June, have your husband tested. And while you're there, you can have yourself tested too, but it's free, it's a screening. What they do is they'll screen you, and if they feel that there was some hearing loss, they'll recommend that you go on to an audiologist to have further testing. But it's free, and it will be here, so in the parking lot at Maze Lake. Again, one of the things that we do through the Lions Club, and we're glad to be able to bring it in a couple times a year and do that. The other thing is Economic Development will be meeting on July 1st, and that'll be here. And I don't know if we're going to start meeting out here with that, or if we'll meet in the room, we're going to meet out here too?
For all the committee meetings except...
So that'll be out here now. But that's at 9:00 o'clock in the morning on July 1st. And again, as some of us heard prior to the start of this meeting, Larry Forrest Briggs' report on things that are going on, there's a lot going on. And we're going to be busy, and I think we're going to be busier as the summer moves on. Right, Jill?
Correct.
And unfortunately, I was taking care of a gentleman that I helped with once in a while and could not attend the visit on Wednesday. How did the visit go? For Cozart Studio?
Oh, thanks.
Larry, you want to?
Anthony Cozart Studio is a phenomenal place. It's the type of facility you would normally see in Los Angeles. It's very commonplace there, but in the Midwest, very uncommon. They do a lot of special effects for movie, photo shoots, lyric opera, costuming, very unique. They basically have a studio there where they do the work, they have a facility where they do displays, and they're going to be doing a variety. They also are doing, teaching there of the, how to do makeup and everything related to that. So they now are in two facilities in that location by Ty Warner Park, and as they go down the path, they would like to be able to separate their business into different sections and have a facility for his own private studio, a facility for teaching, and a facility for displays. So as we go forward, we expect to see him grow here in the community. So, it was great.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Nero?
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of quick items. The next Public Safety Committee meeting will be Tuesday, June 16th, 5:00 at the Fire Headquarters. They had a little change of schedule. The next thing, I'd like to call up Chief Mulhern to just discuss next week's big event, our squad car night.
So echo Clerk Simmski's comments, please. Go, I was there last week, it's a fantastic event. Get out of the house, go there. Next Thursday, definitely come out, starting at 5:00, 4:30, row closes, is our annual Squad Car Night event. We're trying very hard to get squad cars from all over the area. I don't have anyone from Wisconsin yet, but I have two towns that are just like stone throws away from the Illinois-Wisconsin border coming down. We have right now 29 cars coming, and we're working on getting more. Postal Service is having their truck again from last year coming back, and fun and games for all ages. So please, next Thursday night, come and visit us, see police officers from throughout the Chicagoland area, and just enjoy Westmont. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, and just a special thanks to Westmont Special Events and Dawn King and everybody involved for putting this together. It's one of my favorite ones, so I'm looking forward to not having a meeting and finally being able to get out there. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes, just a couple of things. We had a Finance Committee meeting this afternoon, and we discussed water bill late penalty policies, looked into an engagement of an actuary, and I'd like to thank Finance Director Parker for all he's done to help me facilitate this meeting. It was my first one, and I hopefully was able to do a good job. I want to also echo my congratulations to the Fire Department. Everyone in the village, we have a great staff, and I just want to say thank you again. And then on the last note, our next Finance meeting will be July 9th at 4:00 p.m. So, just, that's all we have, Mayor.
Trustee Barker?
Two things. We had, prior to this meeting, we had a Community Development Committee meeting, and we discussed efforts with code enforcement as well as design guidelines, or gateway signage, I'm sorry, gateway signage and design guidelines document for the village, as well as beekeeping and chicken coops, fences, all kinds of topics there, but it was a very large agenda, and we got through that. Also, I wanted to remind people that Westmont First will be having a meeting. It's typically the 3rd Wednesday of the month. I will be out of town, so we rescheduled that meeting for the 4th Wednesday, which is June 24th at 7:00 here at Village Hall. That is all. Thank you.
Moving on, the agenda items to remove from the consent agenda. Is there anybody, if any board member that would like any of the items removed from the consent agenda? Jim, would you like the proclamation moved from the consent agenda?
Right, we can do that. I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion been made, second to remove the proclamation from the consent agenda and address it after. Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee... They've got the wrong trustee here. I can't believe it. Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker? I didn't get Barker.
Yes.
I got thrown, and I was just...
Seeing no other items to be removed, I'd ask Manager May to read the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mayor, first on the consent agenda this evening are the Village Board Minutes, board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held May 28, 2015. Next is Finance Ordinance Number 3, in the amount of $1,312,991.28. Next, we have purchase orders. First purchase order being Contenio, $6,290. Represents electrical work done here in the Village Hall in construction, conjunction with the remodeling that's been going on. Next is Baxter and Woodman, $10,957.50. This represents engineering services for the East Richmond Water Main Project, the design services. Next purchase order, Martin Implement Sales, $13,990. This is for a hydrocedar, it's a piece of equipment used for restoration after excavations. Followed by a purchase order for Bitted Out Tree Experts, $13,455, for continued our never-ending battle with tree removals due to the Emerald Ash Bore. And next, Full Compass Systems, $11,292.22. This is for the sound equipment that's used in the Ty Warner Park during the 4th of July to coordinate and simulcast the audio that goes with the, with the live firework display. Then, SHI International Corp., $9,415. This is for the, the last of the mobile data terminal replacements for the police vehicles. Got two big purchase orders next. First one is Global Emergency Products, $554,805. Last time you approved the agreement to build the, our next fire engine, and this is the amount for that prepayment and including the security that we talked about as well. Last purchase order is Amalgamated Bank of Chicago, $741,366.25, and that's for our bond debt service payment. Total of all the purchase orders is then $1,361,570.97, bringing the total of the purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number 3 to $2,674,562.25. And that would be the end of the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved, Addington.
Second, Nero.
Wasn't made in second, under question. Anybody?
One question. On the build-out here, I see that that wasn't budgeted, and I thought we were going to have discussion, but is that because it's under $10,000? Is that, I thought we had budgeted everything for that room.
It is a budgeted item. Does it say not budgeted on here?
Says not.
No, the, all the work in here, it was in the budgeted, some, there was some unbudgeted work that occurred before the fiscal year. Do you have a qualification, Spencer?
Again, that was my question, I thought we budgeted for it.
Yeah, so that's what I want to say is, the project itself was budgeted in this current year, but the work that was performed, we had some work, as you recall, that was performed last year at the end of the fiscal year before we adopted the budget. That work was not budgeted, and so that's paying out some of that work that was done earlier, which was not budgeted, but the entire project was included in this budget. So, yep.
That answers it. This work was performed in the last fiscal year.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Seem none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we'll go back to the item that was removed, the proclamation to honor William Swanston. And I'd ask Manager May to please read that proclamation.
Whereas William Swanston, known to everyone in the community as Bill, has been an active, longtime resident of the village of Westmont, and whereas William Swanston has been an active member of the Westmont Lions Club through five decades, starting in the 1970s, and whereas William Swanston served as precinct committeeman for more than 30 years, and whereas William Swanston served as trustee for Downers Grove Township for 34 years, and whereas William Swanston served for 10 years as treasurer of the village of Westmont, and whereas William Swanston raised his family in Westmont, and they have been active members of the community. Therefore, Mayor Ronald J. Gunter, by the virtue and authority vested in him as mayor of the village of Westmont, does hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal heretofore that William Swanston shall be presented with a key to the village and honorary, and proclaimed as honorary key holder for the village of Westmont.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington.
Second, Nero.
Motion made, second to approve. Can I, roll call, please.
Should I vote no, Bill?
(LAUGHING). You've got to think about it a little bit.
Roll call.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
And it just so happens, we have Bill here with us tonight. Would you please come up, Bill?[1341.23][1341.23](APPLAUSE). Addington, come on and get between us here. I asked him to come up here because he's probably known you longer than anybody up and on this board, so we'd like to give his proclamation. Your mother might have known you longer, too, but here. And you already got your key, so this is the least we can do for all the service you've given this community, representing us in the township, and as a treasurer for 10 years before we had a full-time treasurer. So you get to smile, and then I'll let you talk. Turn it around.
Ready, here we go, one, two. One more, try it twice.
All right. Bill, congratulations.[1401.01][1401.01](APPLAUSE). Go back here, if you'd like to say a few words.
You can.
Let me just say, because for those who don't know, I first met Bill when he came into the Lions Club, and one of the first projects that I remember him getting involved with is the old Village Hall, when we used to use the office to count money for the old Palau Days when the carnival was right outside. And Bill was one of the original members of that committee when the Lions took Palau Days over, and I think in 1974. And he did a lot of running around counting money for us for a lot of years. And then later on, when he had nothing else to do with his life, he spent 10 years as the treasurer of the Lions Club, and you know he did a good job because we're still here and we're still solvent.
How about that?
So it's your turn to talk.
Really?
You know Jim, too, I know.
Well, those are very nice houses out there that I noticed that when I was sitting, listening to, all of those things were, yes, yes, yes. But, you know, I was fortunate to do the things that were mentioned, and my work at the township, there were some good people, no question about it, and Frank was a greater fellow, running as supervisor. So it was, it was a good experience. Ooh. That's going to stay there, isn't it?
It'll stay, huh? It's new, so it'll stay there.
So, but I don't have anything, you know, that really is going to change you in any way, so... We wanted to get you here, and I already presented the key, Trustee Addington, myself, we're at your little get-together at Papa Cero's for your farewell, hosted by the township. And I think the least we can do for all the years that you've given this community, not only through the township and the treasurer, you also were very, very active in the high school, as far as the band, as far as athletics.
Easy brass.
Yes. So again, Bill, we want to thank you for all the years of service to Westmont, so, thank you.[1562.23][1562.23](APPLAUSE). I think, looking at it, I appreciate the people who let me do it, because it was quite an experience for me in several, and particularly, when you mention the... I'm getting older, and words kind of go in one side and out the other, but we had the Remnant, but I'm going to take off that. But we had a work on getting funds last summer, and I was fortunate to have my grandson and granddaughters doing that, and they knew that they better show up, or Uncle Jan is going to get after them.
(INAUDIBLE) mast.
And we, we got an amount that we never had before, and it, it just, for me, watching your grandkids doing something that, and really enjoying themselves, and just get money to give some, to some people who can, don't have it. You know, you're not going anywhere, so we expect to see you continuing to be active in the community with the Lions Club. And I know you've had many years in that, and again, I can't say enough of how much we appreciate what you've done for this community. I'm going to stay with the, you know, where I was with the elderly. Yep. Well, thank you. That's the only thing I'm worth. Well, that's fine, but thank you, Bill. Thank you. Okay.[1713.01][1713.01](APPLAUSE). And moving on, the agenda unfinished business, there was no unfinished business. I'll move to new business, and it's the Winston Management, Board to Consider an Ordinance to Waive Water Billing Penalties for Winston Management. I'll ask Finance Director Parker to comment on that.
All right, so first of all, I want to let the board know, I just received an email from the petitioner. Unfortunately, they're not able to have a representative here this evening. One of their clients had a last-minute change in their meeting schedule, but they asked me to express on their behalf their appreciation for the board, for your time and effort and your willingness to hear this on your agenda. Winston Management is the petitioner, and they manage and process water bills for Williams Port condos, and they're requesting a waiver of a late penalty of approximately $1,500, $1,491.87, to be exact. The way that our process traditionally works is that if a business or a resident has a late penalty, we will, at their request, you know, if there was a specific situation and cause for it, we will, at their request, staff has the authority to waive one of those penalties per year. In this case, we did that, we waived their penalty in November... In this case, we did that, we waived their penalty in November for the payment they would have made for the October bill, the payment made in November, we waived that penalty. Then in the next two payments, they made on a timely basis, however, in April, we received their payment two days after the due date, and therefore, a penalty was assessed again, and Winston Management is requesting a waiver of that penalty. You had in your packet, the letter from Winston Management explaining the situations, that there were some staffing issues that they've addressed on their end, they thought they had addressed the situation initially, and discovered a few other issues which they believe they have resolved. However, regardless of their staffing issues, they've now made a change with the village where they're going on direct debit, so that the process, the way the process works for individuals on direct debit is, when the bills are due, our system will simply process it, send a file to the bank, which will transfer the money directly from their bank account to the village. Because of that, there is not a way that they could ever be late again, and so they've taken the steps they can to make sure that this situation never happens again, and they're requesting a waiver of that penalty.
If there's no funds in it, they could, as long as there's funds in there, we're okay.
That's true. That's a different issue.
Yeah.
And a different penalty, yes, if they're...
Do I have a motion to...
Well, I'd like to just say one thing, I am totally against this, because we did just to waive it in November, amount just like this, and we don't, we only allow it once within a year cycle. This would be their second.
So I have a motion to pass the ordinance to waive the water billing penalties.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Motion being made in second.
By Barry.
By Barry. Any additional comments?
Comments?
Yeah.
Oh, I've got comments.
Now's the time.
I somewhat echo Jenny's, you know, two in five months, basically, is not one a year, and that seems to be a little bit repetitive. I do like the fact that they've signed up for the auto withdrawal. Again, as long as there's funds there, I guess that wouldn't happen again, but two in five months is, to me, more than oversight, so...
Especially a business like this, you know, I mean, you know, when you have this dollar amount, you think you're a little bit more up to speed on when to pay your water.
No, when it's due. If it's due, the 20th, you know...
And they're a huge management company, you know, it's not just here, they're a big...
Any additional comments?
I think we have the once a year for a reason, you know, sometimes errors happen and, you know, but twice.
You can understand, you know, it does happen, but not repeatedly. People know...
What sets, I mean, we should ask this at Finance Committee, but what sets the late penalty? How does that fee, how is that determined?
It's 10% of the bill.
It's 10% of the bill?
Yes.
Okay. Have we ever waived two before?
Not within a year's...
That's my knowledge.
Okay.
We do not.
And typically, if people, we've had many people ask for it, and what we tell them is the same thing we told this company, which was, you know, staff has the authorization to waive one in a 12-month period. If you'd like another one waived, you'd have to go in front of the village board. Most of the people we talked to, yeah, declined to come and present their case to the board, so, but this group was interested in doing that.
We did discuss at the Finance Committee that in the future, it still needs village board's attention, but we're gonna do it at the Finance Committee as opposed to at a full board meeting, if they have a, their request.
Yeah, and we discussed maybe a minimum dollar amount on a bill where they wouldn't be charged, $50 or something like that, so, but tonight, the motion is to waive that fee to Winston Management. Is there any additional comments from the audience? Seeing none, then I will ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
No.
Trustee Barry?
No.
Trustee Little?
No.
Trustee Barker?
No.
Trustee Guzzo?
I actually recuse my vote.
Trustee Nero?
No.
So...
Thank you.
The waiver is denied. Moving on to new business, B. Andy Frain Incorporated Agreement, Crossing Guard Services. Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving an Agreement When Andy Frain Service Is Incorporated to Perform Crossing Guard Services for School Year 2015-2016. Chief Muller.
Thank you, Mayor. Andy Frain has provided crossing guard services for the past several years for the village. The agreement is for the 2015-2016 school year. Both the police department and local schools are pleased with the service provided by the crossing guards and wish to continue our partnership with Andy Frain Services, Inc. The recommendation is a recommendation of the board by the police chief and the police department to approve the agreement between the village of Westmont and Andy Frain Services. And as we saw earlier tonight, Andy Frain provides all the crossing guards, all services, alleviates the police department or any other village employees from having to go out and perform those services. In the past, if someone was sick or couldn't make it, we had to take an officer off the street to go and do that. It's been a very good arrangement, and we're very happy with their services.
Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second. On the question. Marie?
The only thing I was gonna ask, this is for all the school districts, correct?
Uh, yes.
Westmont and Marker?
Yes, and Holy Trinity as well.
And Holy Trinity, okay.
Any additional questions? The only thing I, the two that were here earlier, that wasn't on-the-job injuries, was it?
I don't know, Mayor. I don't know if the crossing sign is that heavy, or...
They took one for the kids, that's expensive, that's right.
I would ask, I would ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you aware of the training that they have? Have you seen their training program?
No, I know they attend training in August. It's an official training. Andy Frain not only provides services for Westmont, but other communities as well. And so I know they provide all the equipment, and I'm sure the training. We've had no issues, any safety issues mentioned at all, by any parent or by our officers who do spot checks on the guards.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I do know, too, that several of these guards, Jim especially, has been at Norfolk and gas for as long as I can remember, you know, and so they actually worked with us prior to Andy Frain, and Andy Frain just assumed most of the old timers right into the program, so a good portion of our crossing guards have been handling crossings in Westmont for an awful long time, and they do a good job.
And also benefit, too, is Andy Frain, they are able to go and provide services at Andy Frain's, like you can see them downtown at United Center. Any place where Andy Frain has not only the crossing guard, but for the summer to help him get through, they can go work side jobs.
And I think a good point is, I would imagine, majority of them reside in Westmont, so they take a little bit more pride in their job. And I've seen no other questions, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Moving on, Service Contract, Building Permit Review and Inspection Services. Board to Consider an Ordinance Authorizing a Revised Agreement with Don Morris Architects. Community Development Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a revised agreement before you tonight. This reflects the newly adopted codes that we worked on last year for the international building codes, and we formally had a, we were required to give Don Morris six months' notice if we wanted to amend their contract. We amended that to 90 days, and then took out some of our previous programs that we had implemented in the past. As we mentioned in Community Development Committee this afternoon, we are using Don Morris less, and we're using our building commissioner more. As you can see, our inspections and permit reviews have gone up substantially in-house, but we still need to use Don Morris on an as-needed basis, so we're requesting approval of this revised agreement to use them as needed.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second. On the question. Trustee Barry?
I'd like to see a continuation of phasing out Don Morris. You know, I believe Nick and Jill and the rest of the department is the way to go, inhabit in-house, so I'm glad to see that we're going to that as-needed basis, and hopefully, this is one of the ways we can reduce costs. I know that that was talked about a lot today, about reducing these costs. I know we hear from a lot of businesses, a lot of residents, that our costs have kind of got a little out of balance with our neighboring communities, so glad to see that this is starting to move that way.
Yeah, we appreciate that. We're trying to work toward more efficiencies and trying to be as user-friendly and be as cost-effective as we can.
You do a great job in there, Jill. We hear a lot about that, you do a great job.
Yes.
Any additional questions? Anybody in the audience seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Moving on, Fence Text Amendment. Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving a Text Amendment to the Zoning Code and Municipal Code to Update Fence Regulations. Community Development Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor. This text memo was also brought up during Community Development Committee this afternoon. We brought it to the Planning and Zoning Commission last month to update our construction standards, allow us to do fence hole inspections, and then, as Trustee Barry just mentioned, we're asking to reduce our permit costs because we felt that they were out of line compared to other communities. Our residential fence permit is currently $150, and some of the communities around us are zero, $40, $50. We're asking for a flat fee of $75, which would put us more in line and help cover our costs in terms of review and inspections. We recommend approval, and Nick, our building commissioner, and I are available if there's any questions.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second. Second, Little.
All right, got your name in before she did, okay. Motion's been made in second, and on the question. Anybody in the audience have a question? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes. Mobile Gas Station, 798 East Ogden Avenue. Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving the Following Agreements, what, Buchanan Energy?
Buchanan.
Buchanan?
Buchanan.
Buchanan, we'll get it. LLC, Regarding the Mobile Gas Station Site Located at 798 East Ogden Avenue. One, Limited Area Groundwater Ordinance, and Two, Limited Environmental Indemnity Attorney Zemanek.
Thank you, Mayor. The mobile gas station has some environmental contamination, petroleum contamination on site. They're working with the IEP A to get their no further remediation letter. One of the standard conditions of the IEP A is that the village pass a limited groundwater ordinance which prohibits the use of wells within a defined area surrounding, immediately surrounding the site. The village does not allow for well use anyhow, so it's pretty much a non-issue as far as we're concerned, but in order to make the IEP A happy and allow this owner to move on with their business, recommend passage of that ordinance. None of the contamination that we know of is contained in the public right-of-way. The plume of petroleum, based on the analysis of the engineers, is all contained within the site, but to the extent it would migrate, or groundwater would migrate into the right-of-way, and the village performs work in the right-of-way, we require this indemnity agreement whereby the owner of the gas station would clean up any dirty soils there and indemnify the village against any claims. So when they come to us saying there's been contamination, we come back to them and say we'd like this agreement. They've signed off on the agreement already, and we've done this for several other gas stations throughout town at various times.
Do I have a motion?
So move Guzzo.
Second, Nero. Motion being made in second, and question. Trustee Addington?
Yeah. Because of location, how does this affect Route 34 being a state highway? Do they have to talk to them also, in addition to us?
So the groundwater ordinance is completely within our control.
Right.
The environmental indemnification agreement is optional, so that would be up to IDOT if they become aware of this, if they want to do something about it.
But basically, all we're talking about then is whatever we do with the Pasconelli Drive.
Pasconelli, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not messing that straight up again.
Any additional questions? Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
All right, award of bid proposal, Comner Road Reconstruction Project. Board to Consider an Ordinance Accepting the Bid Proposal From RW Dunterman, I said there, For The Village's Cumner Road Reconstruction Project, and Authorizing a Construction Contract Consistent with the Bid Documents. Manager May.
Mayor, the village accepted bid proposals from five contractors for the Cumner Road Reconstruction Project. The low bidder was RW Dunterman Company with the low bid of $1,443,307.75, 75 cents, which is almost exactly, it's within 1% of the engineer's estimate, which was $1,427,050.70. Staff is recommending award of this construction contract.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Moving on, Engineering Agreement. Cumner Road Reconstruction Project. Board to Consider an Ordinance Authorizing an Engineering Agreement with Burns and McDonnell for Construction Phase III Engineering Services for the Cumner Road Reconstruction Project. Manager May.
This is for the same project. The Phase III engineering is what would be the construction inspection services. We're requesting to approve the amount of $145,882.70 for this Phase III construction for Cumner Road. To Burns and McDonnell.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Little.
Made in second, and on the question.
When is this gonna kick off, start, start working on it?
You know, when we, a typical timeline is, we approve this contract, we exchange it, there's, can be a week or two of contract documents and bonds that have to be prepared, but the pre-construction meeting will happen within a couple of weeks, and depending on their schedule, you know, essentially right away.
Nice. And we let all the residents know what's going on?
We will know when they have a pre-construction meeting.
Perfect, all right.
We've got a better schedule.
That's all I have.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
It passes, we'll move on to award a bid proposal, 2015 Fall MFT Resurfacing Project. Board to Consider an Ordinance Awarding the Bid Proposal from Central Blacktop for the village's 2015 Fall MFT Resurfacing Project, and Authorizing a Contract Consistent with the Bid Documents. Manager May.
This is, we call it the fall resurfacing, we're not waiting to fall to do it, it's just that we've been doing two per year under that bond issue we previously had, so this is the second one for this year, but similarly, it could start much sooner. We accepted bid proposals from four contractors for the 2015 Fall MFT, which is motor fuel tax, resurfacing project, the low bidder was Central Blacktop with a low bid of $1,028,558.59, which is 12% below the engineer's estimate of probable cost, so we're recommending award to Central Blacktop.
Do I have a motion?
So move Guzzo.
Guzzo. Second, Nero. Motion made in second, and on the question, none.
Is there a reason, did they give an explanation as to why the 12% difference?
You know, I didn't read the actual recommend, the, with the resurfacing, Norial does the estimating, and we use project, prices from the unit prices we did on the last project. So I'll just say very quickly, it's almost 100% of the time based on fuel prices, and by fuel, I mean, the asphalt is a bitumen or petroleum product, and it's as volatile as the market is, so, but we're happy to see it under the estimate instead of 12% over.
Thank you.
That, and how bad they want the job, and, there's a couple factors.
Engineers always want to look good.
They want to, they don't want to be...
Add the numbers.
They don't want to be...
Want to be like the last one, you want to be right in the middle of all.
Any additional questions? Anybody seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Add.
Yes.
Moving on, engineering agreement for this 2015 Fall MFT Resurfacing Project. Board to consider and ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Seco Consultants Incorporated for material testing and inspection services for the 2015 Fall MFT Resurfacing Project. Manager May.
Same project that was just awarded. This is the construction. It's more of the material testing than it is the construction inspection. We do do that part in-house. And so, you know, consider the laboratory portion of the inspection services that we need assistance with. Seco Consultants, if not all, do the majority of our work for several years. Recommending approval, please.
Staff is, do I have a motion?
So move Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business J, the Comprehensive Plan Design Guidelines Adoption. Board to consider and ordinance adopting the revised commercial area design guidelines for the village of Westmont. And I'll ask Community Development Director Ziegler to fill us in on this.
Thank you, Mayor. We showed this during our last two Community Development Committee meetings. And this is the final stage of our comprehensive plan. This will help give us some guidance when we're approving new projects that are coming into our TIF districts, including 63rd Street and the downtown. And it will also help us with downtown requests for grant funding. We've already been using them for some sign requests. So we've included them, gotten a few comments and feedback, had our consultant revise them accordingly, and we're looking for adoption at this point.
Do I have a motion? To approve as presented?
So move Nero.
Second, Barker.
Motion been made and seconded. On the question? Anybody in the audience? Trustee Addington.
Well, just when you were holding your discussions and getting feedback, was there any negative?
No. In fact, we've actually provided them to a couple of architects that we've been working with for economic development projects, and they're pleased to have them. We don't have an appearance commission, which kind of adds an extra level of process.
This is, sounds like very much of a positive one.
Right. It's an efficient step, and it gives them something to build on when they start a project. So, and then it gives us something that we can compare them against as well.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Add.
Yes.
Moving on, prevailing wage ordinance. Board to consider and ordinance to ascertain the prevailing wages as defined in Set Act. Manager May.
Mayor, this is a requirement of state law. We're required annually to adopt the prevailing wage as part of the act. And the prevailing wage is provided by the state of Illinois, and it's published. We just adopt it, and each contract references the most current version of the prevailing wages. But it is a requirement, and we have to pass it annually and certify that we did.
Do I have a motion?
So move Guzzo. Second, Little.
Motion made and seconded. On the question? I just ask attorney, what happens if the governing body does not pass? Is this a state law?
It is a state law. And, you know, it can put in jeopardy funding that you get, including federal funding, et cetera. Because I think you have to certify that you're paying prevailing wages for federal grants and funding and projects, and including IDOT projects. It's a requirement as well.
Yeah, and that's why it's pretty much a formality. Every year, you need to do it.
And it's one of the governor's topics, you know, as well, you know, just prevailing wage reform. But right now, it's as it always has been.
And one of the reasons municipal jobs sometimes are high is because we need to abide by the prevailing...
Right.
Yeah. And contractors have to sign off and document.
They do, and then they, right, the bulk of that burden is on the contractor. They have to provide certified payroll, you know, when requested. They, as part of the contract documents, acknowledge that they're following the prevailing wages and...
Yeah.
And just a quick comment, Mayor, as you brought up a good point. I know the Illinois Policy Institute just released an article saying that this is the exact reason why public works projects in Illinois cost, I believe it was the most, highest-paid construction workers. So I know it's something we have to prove it's a state law, but I'm completely, there's, we got to rework it. And I hope our state legislator can finally do something. But really, over the years, it's become off balance because prevailing wage for most tradesmen, because they're so seasonal. When you work for a municipality, you're 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year. So that prevailing wage then becomes really out of balance with what, you know, an electrician might only be getting 20 hours a week out in the trades. So it's really become out of whack in my opinion.
Yeah. This does not apply to our employees, just our contracted work for the village of Westmont.
Correct.
Any additional comments, questions? Anybody seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. We may still get done in time just for a little bit of the street fair. Strategic Plan Presentation. Manager May.
We have, at the last meeting, you awarded, authorized the contract for the consulting services for the strategic plan and actually generated a lot of questions as to, you know, what the content of a strategic plan is. You know, we reviewed how we staff went through and selected a consultant to perform the strategic plan. But tonight with us is Lynn Montai. And this evening, you all will get, we've already been doing a fair amount of work for the last two weeks. There's been a, we call it guidance team, selected and assembled that has been working with Lynn to formulate how we proceed with the rest of the plan. Next Monday, a week from Monday, I should say, will be the staff workshop portion, of which about approximately 40 staff will be participating in their own portion of the strategic plan process. And tonight is the village board orientation. So Lynn, if you would introduce yourself a little bit, I hope that just turns on, right? Well, look at that.
Seems to be on. Thank you. And good evening, Mayor Gunther and the village board. It's really a pleasure to be here with you, and I'm so glad I came in time to observe the awards and the experience of watching the village, village board operate and the great presentations of staff and all. It really, it's really a great privilege to work with public servants. And most of my clients, many of my clients are. And that is one of the reasons I love what I do. So I would like to share an overview and some highlights of the strategic planning process that we are embarking upon. As Steve said, we have already convened a guidance team and done quite a bit of work, and I'll be going over that. Would like to acknowledge the members of that team and talk a little bit more with you about your role. So this is a brief overview, opportunity for questions either while we're going through it or at the end. So just please speak up. What I'd like to cover tonight is the reasons to do a strategic plan. You covered that somewhat at your last meeting, which I saw on your live stream, what it is and isn't. The outcomes that we are proposing and have been worked over a little bit by staff and by the guidance team. The approach we're using for the plan development, the fact that it's in three phases, that there are process principles that we'll be using to guide us, what the content typically would be, and at the end, questions and comments if we haven't covered them as we go along. So why do this? What was expressed at your meeting last time, as well as through other discussions and conversations we've had, is to develop this clear-focused direction and priorities for the village. This is a way of keeping in mind what your priorities are and helping you set direction, which gives you guidance during your budget process, which helps in policymaking and decision-making along the way. And it also signals to the larger community and the public what the village of Westmont stands for. It also establishes and accelerates momentum. Because during this process, you get a chance to crystallize what you want to create for the future. And that inspiring future is essentially your target. And a trajectory hopefully will be designed in this process. That's what we're about to do. And the momentum that you build in the process and the content of the plan should fuel you to that new future. So a strategic plan should be forward-looking and aspirational. A roadmap, yes. It contains mission, core values, a vision for the future and for a specific target date in the future in clear and compelling language. And obviously, as well sets the direction and strategy for this given timeframe. Now, we did not go into this with an idea of what that timeframe should be. But the guidance team, which met twice in the last two weeks already, kicked this around quite a bit. And their recommendation is that the target year be the year 2021. One might say, well, why not 2020? Well, as a five-year plan, it would be by the time we complete this, 2021. And I understand that would also be the first year of your second 100 years. So kind of an ideal way of preparing for your second century of existence as a community. A strategic plan is not a tactical implementation plan. It's higher level than that. And it isn't a list of projects or initiatives either. It will potentially contain some of that information, but not in list form. It will be contextualized because this is a comprehensive roadmap, if you will, as different from the comprehensive plan, for example, which is specific to land use. So I'd like to see a strategic plan that describes an exciting unfolding future for the village of Westmont. And the best plans that you read really draw you in and inspire the participation and enthusiasm which you certainly want. And I see it's already alive and well in this community. The guidance team filled me in on that, and I got a real experience of it tonight in noticing the way people participate here in a very authentic way. It was really refreshing. The planning process itself is a discipline for becoming clear and focused and strategically aligned with your mission, with your core values, and with your vision for the future. That is a fairly short-term duration, even though we think this might take us about six months. You will notice that a lot is going to happen during that period of time. And then by fall, we'll be working with a team that's going to help reduce, or I shouldn't say reduce, but dedicate everything, all the data that we have generated, and put that into writing. So what do you want out of the strategic plan? Well, here is a list of potential desired outcomes. This, again, was developed in my meetings with staff at first and also with Mayor Gunther, and then with the guidance team. And so far, we have noted eight ideas of desired outcomes for the planning process. Now, in a way, the process can deliver a lot more than a document, and that's what we're hoping for. And the approach that I'll describe very shortly is designed to meet these outcomes. So let's go through them kind of quickly here. And I have a, I have a text version that's a little bit longer. So clear vision and direction. This means for the new village board, for administration, for village staff, and for community stakeholders. You're looking for clarity and you're looking for direction. A well-constructed set of statements that are really important to you going forward for the selected time horizon. As I mentioned, mission, core values, vision, goals, strategies, and actions. Usefulness in policy decision-making and municipal operations, which I hadn't mentioned before. This is, this is a roadmap that can be used very effectively by not only your administration and directors, but also personnel. You can use a strategic plan in orientation with new employees. It can be used for economic development purposes. That clarity and the excitement and enthusiasm and, as I said, the momentum that it builds can be a very useful tool to you. Setting this new trajectory and to advance priority initiatives and build momentum. Create partnerships, stakeholder partnerships formed through a variety of quality engagement means that we will be doing. Further connect, trust, collaborate, and commit. That is already alive and well here, I can see. But it never hurts, you can never do enough of the building and cultivating of that. As well as, within the operation, cultivating cohesiveness in the team across the departments and among village staff. And finally, on this list was the item about potentially identifying managerial and operational efficiencies in the organization. As Manager May said, we'll be convening the staff in about two weeks. And the opportunity there is to begin to get clarity within the organization, how it functions and how people relate to each other and collaborate with each other. So it can be very synergistic with the development of a strategic plan as well. Approach. It was really the presentation of the approach, I think, that made the difference. As, as Manager May said, there were some, several consultants who were interviewed. The approach that I offered is a whole system learning and planning process. What that means is that it's not done only by a select set of people, by one voice, such as the village board, or such as the staff, or even the staff and village board combined. This really tries to appeal to the whole system, the whole community of Westmont, and invites participation from that system. To engage and learn and access information and the insights and wisdom of all of those pieces and parts, we need to bring the diverse stakeholders together and create conversations and learning opportunities in there. That is, I'm going to explain a little bit more about the importance of that. But even the guidance team that we pulled together is representative of the diversity of the community. And that was done with staff to begin to name some people we could bring together to help guide us through our process. We also are looking to stimulate creativity and innovation. We're looking to cultivate ownership and credibility and build trust and collaboration. So quite literally, our planning orientation, it facilitates the process of shaping the future. And, and a future in which the village can prosper. That could be seen in contrast to approaches that react to a future created by others, or possibly just seek to improve and perfect the present in hopes of surviving reasonably well. And the notion of creating a future is such a more exciting idea, and it also gives you the potential of this innovation and creativity that I was describing. We have proposed and are utilizing three phases to this process. The first, discovery and design. The next, stakeholder engagement. And the third, synthesis and plan development. There's a little bit more detail here that we don't want to get too granular this late in the evening, but only suffice it to say that in the discovery and design phase, some of which has already been accomplished, we are ferreting out what we need to do, how we establish our roles, how we manage this project, how we inform and communicate. The guidance team has been together, as I said already, for two, two-hour said already, for two two-hour meetings. They helped me create a stakeholder inventory, which is very rich and will be shared with all of our stakeholders and enriched further, because we clearly missed some people and some groups. And you do the best you can, but you will always be able to add more. We'll be designing the process and talking about what the end product should look like. In the stakeholder engagement phase, which overlaps, as you can see, we're still doing one, but we're also starting two. Stakeholder engagement this evening is part of that. I'll be interviewing eight community thought leaders, and from those interviews, we'll be gathering data and information from individuals. We'll have the staff workshop on June 22. Stakeholder workshops in July, there will be two. The same people, some 40 to 45 individuals representative of the whole system, the whole community of Westmont, will participate in two evening meetings that will run about three and a half hours each. After we have done some of the synthesis, the village board will come back together and look at the draft before it's released for circulation to the community and comment. And in the end of the process, there will be a community dialogue, which will again be a conversational experience, that it will be a designed experience where people have a chance to answer questions. Did we hear you? What did we miss? Let's talk about what this needs in terms of refinement. The last phase, synthesis and plan development, is how we capture all the data that has been generated in all these engagement processes and bring it down to a written plan that is compelling, that's cogent, that's crisp, that's exciting. And that is going to be the work of a team that will work with me on consecutive weeks. Probably, it'll take four or five weeks for us to get that into a shape that can be put before you at your workshop later in the fall. Let's see. Process principles that I recommend we follow. To me, these are very powerful guidance, and they help people to know and understand how to participate and focus their attention in a way that's very generative, rather than in a way that's very reactive. Principles of engagement, and I'm just going to quickly say what those are. Widen the circle of involvement. Connect people to each other and around our purpose. Be, use democratic principles throughout our process, and be a community of action, not just talk. So, I won't go into each one of those, but you can kind of get a feel for what principles do. They ground you in a set of, within a discipline, actually, that allows you to move with ease through the process. There are principles about how to listen, principles of how to think in terms of whole system, rather than narrowly, to use a creative stance rather than a reactive stance, and appreciate the idea of organic systems rather than mechanistic systems. In other words, it's an organization, it's a community, it's a live, living, breathing thing that has great potential. And when treating it that way, it makes way more sense. You know, in years past, when I would talk about organic living systems, people kind of said, huh? These days, with the understanding about locally grown food, our farmers markets, our understanding of what organic means, it's no mystery anymore. And it's kind of exciting that we've come to the place where that's kind of a given. So, I'm happy about that. So, I was going, I showed this slide a second time, because I was going to go over the details on my second round through, but I've already done that, so we can skip to the planned content. And I'm almost finished here. The planned content segments will probably be these, and the guidance team has already talked about these, agrees with them pretty much as being important, and then a few others that are not on this list. Who we are is the Village of Westmont. Our statement of mission or purpose, same thing. Core values. Statement of vision for the year 2021. The high-level goals that are going to be necessary to achieve your vision. And then your plan of action, which is the strategies and actions that are necessary to achieve the goals. So, those are all going to be part of the plan. However, we don't envision a plan being 25 pages. It's succinct, it's clear. There have been some models I've shared with the guidance team to talk about format, but typically, this is crisp enough that anybody can pick it up and read it and feel like they don't get lost in the blur of many paragraphs of text for every, on every page. So, this little silly slide is about why is Lynn so enthusiastic about strategic planning, and what is she smiling about? It's because of this. I think that it's fun, and I really do try to create conditions so that we have fun, so that it is enjoyable, but also very stimulating and very dynamic. And it's a privilege to be part of something bigger than oneself, and I don't need to tell you that. You've clearly demonstrated that, and you do in your own service to the village. And finally, to discover that what was once thought as impossible or totally out of reach is really possible, and to go through a process like that and get the feeling of that is really very thrilling. And that's why I love to do it, and I hope that you will enjoy it as well. So, with that, I'm open to any questions or comments you may have.
We've, being part of the guidance team, and I know, Trustee Addington, it's already kind of interesting things that are coming out for our team. And when's the last time the village, I know Kathy, when's the last time the village had a strategic plan?
Twelve years ago.
Twelve years ago. So, okay. Any questions?
May I recognize the guidance team? I forgot to put them in the slide presentation, but I do have the list of names. So, Mayor Gunter and Trustee Addington, Manager May, Larry McIntyre, Bob Fleck from the Park District, Amy Quatron from the Assistant Principal at Westmont Junior High and lifelong resident, Roseanne Terry of the Police Department, Laura Trilla, business owner, Jim Wright, lifelong resident and village employee, Larry Forsberg, Chamber Executive Director. So, that is our guidance team.
And I know, anybody in the audience, I know two individuals been sitting through this whole thing. Do you have any questions on this or anything?
No.
I have a question, Lynn. Where do you reside?
Riverside.
Riverside. Thank you.
I think probably everybody's ready to see the end result, but we'll be involved. I think all the trustees will be part of this, including a number of our residents. And those eight people you're interviewing, the team, now it's probably, we came up with 50 names, I think, Larry, I'm looking at Larry. And we don't want to have, we want to get diverse people, people that may not, that might have different feelings than someone else. We want different viewpoints from the community.
The idea is not to bring only people who would agree.
Yes.
The likely suspects, if you will. The idea is to engage diverse perspectives.
And we've come up with...
Then you better get eight new people.
We've come up with a list of all different types of individuals. I think that'll be a good eight people to interview.
That's exciting.
Any additional questions? Staff, Kathy, anything to add?
You did mention about yourself as a county manager.
Oh.
Oh, DuPage mayors and managers, yes.
Yeah.
So, I was the executive director of a council of governments for 17 years prior to starting my business. So, I have a long association with local governments, and we did intergovernmental cooperation, legislative advocacy, transportation planning.
And that, DuPage mayors and managers, which we belong to, and Steve and myself have been attending, and every year, there's a mayor that becomes the chair of...
President.
President. And they lead that organization. Was there somebody here that did that?
That's why she got out troublesome.
Then Mayor Addington was.
Then Mayor Addington was president of DuPage mayors and managers.
1987.
Yeah. And Lynn was the executive director.
Executive director.
During that time, yes.
And yet, you still want this job.
Despite that, yes.
Seeing nothing else, we thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, really.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to quite a bit of meetings in the future. Miscellaneous, anybody have any miscellaneous items? Trustee Barry.
No.
No, I thought, you know, this...
This calls on you now.
All right. Since we do not have an executive session, there's no executive session tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move Little.
Second Addington.
Motion made in second to adjourn the meeting. Roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
And I'd like to thank everybody who attended, and this meeting is adjourned.